May 26, 2015, this is a special meeting of the Barstown City Council. I've got something prepared, I'm gonna read to you. The second item on your agenda is a fiscal financial report right there and it's my letter. And I'll go ahead and read that. Yes, my mother told me to wear these the next time I meet someone. So dear members of the Barstown City Council and the community of Barstown, it is with great pleasure that I transmit to you the 2016 proposed budget for the city of Barstown. And I am pleased with my administration's dedication to improving our city. This budget represents the financial plan for the coming fiscal year, July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016. This plan includes the following: to preserve the public's safety and maintain our capacity in the police department and moving to the combination of full-time volunteer fire department 24/7, or as you guys would say, 24/48. This will be achieved by adding seven full-time firefighters. The proposed increase in staff will be paid for by removing the $100,000 cap on the occupational tax, increasing the current tax rate from one-half percent to three-quarters of a percent effective January 1, 2016. And it is a one-time increase for the utility dividend transfer of 2016 by $1,650,000. It is anticipated the occupational tax will generate an additional $400,000 in revenue for 2016 and 1.1 billion in years after there. Or thereafter, excuse me. Major capital improvements to the water system includes painting inside and out of the water tank treatment plant, clear wells, the stabilization of the Rebel Dam on Beach Fork River and repair to the bank to preserve our raw water supply from the Beach Fork River. Major capital improvements for several sewer systems include replacing 1,800 feet of sewer lines on the East O'Brien Avenue. This is an ongoing effort to prevent stormwater infiltration into the sanitary sewer lines, thereby preventing sewer line overflows. Also including and replacing the biotower media, paint protective coating and treatment plant equipment and maintaining the drive at the Jerry Riley Sewer Plant. To decrease workers' compensation by purchasing a front-loaded garbage truck and the dumpsters to reduce the strain or the injury to the garbage collection employees. Increase in personnel in the cable department to include three additional cable installers to reduce our need for contract services. Continue to expand our cable and internet services to six new areas in Nelson County. My administration appreciates the open dialogue that I've had with you and look forward, continue to work together and move our city forward. And I especially appreciate the safety, or not the safety, but the committee meetings that we have had. I know there have been quite a few and I do appreciate that. And that's what makes this city government work the best. Thank you.
I have a comment, Mayor. Do we have a deficit in our budget?
Tracy.
We will if we...
I mean, yes or no, do we have a deficit?
Yes.
A deficit? I made it on short here.
But the mayor has asked that we put in, if the council agreed, raise the occupational tax to 1.4% and removing the cap, what it would look like?
I don't know, I'm preferring that this copper here, it do not show a deficit. It shows surplus $656,122.
That's because we're using our unrestricted funds currently and we're also using part of, excuse me, utility dividends. We had to increase those. So we're dipping into our savings.
I'm gonna give you my opinion. We did not create this spontaneous combustion. And to throw this on us all at one time, I have a problem with it. And I would not support increase in profit taxes. No way of fashion. Because from my revelations, we had about a million dollars in surplus fund and we do not have to raise taxes. And like I indicated, we council members have been put in a situation that I am not pleased with. And I would not support no increase in profit taxes. Because the city can...
We're not increasing the profit taxes.
I mean, not the profit, our present tax. Because this will affect many people in Barstown. People struggling in Barstown. You may not be struggling, but there's people in Barstown that are struggling trying to make ends meet. There's small businesses struggling. We throwing more expense on business, but the big business are expanding and creating jobs. That's a plus for the community. And all of a sudden, we gonna throw another expense on them when we didn't have to? To put this expense on them? That's my opinion. I'm against raising any kind of tax. I don't care what kind of tax it is. I can't afford paying more taxes. I'm quite sure all the people cannot afford paying taxes. Well, it shouldn't been this way. If we had analyzed and evaluated and all aspect, planned, putting a plan together, in two or three weeks, all blew. It's, like I said, created a spontaneous combustion.
Have a form?
Yes, sir.
Question. This budget, did we leave the extra in for the extra streets or did we not? Did we put the extra in or didn't we? The way I'm reading this, looks like we left it the way it was. That's a question.
I thought, did we add $100,000?
Well, it's still $350,000. That's my answer.
What?
Yeah, that's not showing up here. That got overlooked when we get to the end of the first year.
Okay, so if we did, then that would be an additional $100,000 expense if we did that.
Correct.
Or whatever you decide to leave. Second question. Tracy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you and I spoke this morning and I showed you some of the numbers out here. So I want to repeat what I asked you this morning, make sure I got the point. So this budget includes the proposed occupational tax increase to the $2.3 million.
Correct.
And it shows a balance of $656,000. But as we spoke this morning, this budget includes, just as you said, we're bringing money over from unreserved, put in the budget. Then throughout the budget, we put money back into the unreserved by these line items. But the net of that is that we would have a surplus of $390,000 at the end of the year.
Well, and as we discussed, it's not really a surplus, but if we do have that extra, it goes back into the unrestricted funds to use for the next fiscal year.
So the bottom line would be that if this budget wasn't active and it went according to the plan, to the penny, at the end of the fiscal year, if you draw a box around the whole city's finances, we would be to the good at $390,000.
Correct.
I just want to make sure everybody kind of gets, understands that it's not $656,000, it's $390,000.
No, it's still not. Yes.
I still have the floor.
You've got the problem here.
Okay. And the other question was with regards to, this, the new fire equipment that's shown in these detailed sheets, is that gonna be bought this year or next year? Well, some of this looks like it's what we approved in the budget for this year and now there's money showing up in next year. There's some in both years?
Yes, there is an additional amount and that was figured into that budget before we moved the replacement of the truck up.
Well, there was also some turnout here.
Yes.
Okay. So we're not counting the plows?
Correct.
Okay, I'm done.
I forgot my other comment, Mayor. I'm reviewing this budget probably for the last four or five years. Part of our budget was $1,000,000 some dollars last year. $1,006,458 this year. That's some double. The part, I mean, by separating, it making the part of our budget is double. Make your head spin.
Councilman Lidian, that has to do with the $650,000 truck they plan on purchasing?
That's a one-time purchase. Not a one-time purchase, but it only occurs once every 25 to 30 years.
So what you're saying is you're gonna purchase this $650,000 one-time purchase, then the following year after that, you're gonna take it in on the front, but you'll recover the next year?
Yes, it's not gonna be there the next year. And it was already scheduled into the budget for fiscal year 19.
Right. And it's one of those, it's one of those that we're gonna have to have, no charge. Counselman Simpson?
I want to talk to you. We were talking about the black, is, am I saying this is still got $100,000 blacked up and drove to the sewer plant? Is that true?
$100,000? No, sir. I don't believe there was $100,000 being blacked up into the plant. I didn't get to the right sheet. There was some money put in there. Yes, there's a total for the overall painting was 42,000, 45,000 for the asphalt, total asphalt. And then we reduced the utilities in the sewer by $100,000. I believe it was $400,000.
Yeah, 620, yeah, 620 to 5.5.
So I'm not sure. I just got this version of the budget right before the meeting, so I'm gonna look at it. Oh, that's resurfacing the treatment structures. That's actually the deterioration of the headwork structures at the intake where it's resurfacing the painting. Where there's currently just concrete and you've got sulfide gas coming in at the plant and it eats that concrete away and that concrete is falling away, it's falling off. So that includes the recovering that headwork structure, but there's quite footage of it interior with the protective coating, kind of like we did the manhole or forced maintenance down there within the distribution system this last year. We coated with a special epoxy coating to help protect them and give them some longevity. That's what we're trying to do, Zayo, because I think that's what I thought. And plus, there was also coating of the metal pieces within the clear wells, the, not the clear wells, the clarifying units and some other metal armed equipment in the treatment plant. So it's exposed to the elements and the waste stream. So there was the clarifying arms, some of that metal and the weird structure, all that needed to be painted, that's what we painted since the plant was built. Some of that needs to be resurfaced. That's what that's referring to.
And the, what we were gonna...
Is that this year?
Yes, on your line.
That says 160, this says 100.
100.
Okay. Well, why is this, I thought this is a five-year plan?
This is under fiscal year.
This year?
Mm-hmm. It's got planned out.
But we are gonna black top 47,000 dollars with the black top up after, is that what you said earlier?
I had proposed to do some black top.
I mean, is that in the budget?
It's in the budget, yes. It's currently in the budget, I'll put that in.
Of course, wait, Tracy, how did you come up, who came up with this $400,000 and anticipated for this office? How did you pull up that number? Who came up with that number?
Using existing figures of the occupational tax, because it would only be the first, it'd be from January 1 to June 30, so you know, look at six months, so what we normally take in around that time. And it's a quarter of a percent.
So it's not, it's not for four quarters, it's for so many quarters, is that what you're trying to say?
It's for the first two quarters.
First two quarters, so this $400,000 will be for the first two quarters?
Yes, from January 1 to next year.
So it's kind of misleading again, I mean, it should...
Well, it's based on what we currently take in, the first two quarters. So from January, it starts 2016. Well, we couldn't, you wouldn't collect it from the second two quarters of 2015. You wouldn't collect it then. It wouldn't be initiated until 2016, January. Is that correct? Because you wouldn't come into halfway through the year and say, okay, we're gonna raise the occupational tax on you. Normally what you do is set it after January 1.
But to calculate it for four quarters, it would be more than $400,000.
But we're not, we don't have four quarters in this budget. We're only gonna have the first two.
You will have four quarters.
Yes, for next year's budget.
I know. Definitely you will have four quarters. But what I'm trying to say is, it seem like that you would put this together in a four-quarter estimation instead of six months, two months, or whatever you got for $400,000. So another way, four quarters, it would be more than $400,000, right?
Right. And the mayor's address, that's what it said. For this year, it would be $400,000. The fiscal year after this year is when we estimate the additional, yes.
But it's not for four quarters.
Because it wouldn't go into effect until the second half of this upcoming fiscal year. So you're kind, yeah.
Okay, my only comment is regarding the, I accept the need for all the expenditure in the budget we've been through and I think all these things are well documented and I think it's, I'm not convinced that the way to fund it is the increase in the occupational tax, because we haven't even looked at all the other options. So I guess I would accept the budget as it's written. We can show an increase in the occupational tax, but I think when the time comes later this year and we look at our different options for taxes, that we look at all of our options and really discuss it and understand what all those options are before we decide where that revenue's coming from. So that's just, that's the only caveat I have today. And we can maybe start that discussion in finance committee.
Other options being what?
Carpet tax, insurance tax, and there's one other that escapes. The state gives us four ways to erase actives and I suggest we look at them all before we decide. But we're not gonna make that decision. I mean, that's a separate topic from the budget. But I'd like for us to look at all the options.
Fred, you refer to the insurance premium tax?
Insurance premium tax, which I'm quite, I know it exists, but I'm not a student of it, I don't know how it works. I know most other cities use it, so I don't know why we don't, just as an example. I'd like for us to decently look at it.
Fred, I think we should study all aspects, as spoken just some...
Yeah, and we also talked about franchise fee on our gas and electric as another way of revenue stream and then we could all peak using the utility. So anyway, those, I just think those things can be looked at. It's kind of further right there.
Well, the only other thing that I would say is that in this process, I did not ask or did I want what is taking place with the fire department. It is something that has happened and it's been in the process for quite a few years before a lot of us got here. Now, my ultimate action goal was to combine these two, make it into one, have a 24/48 fire department and be professional and not that it isn't already. Through the full-time and volunteers, both are professional, in my opinion. But now that we have been dealt with the cards that we have, we can't excuse not looking out for the community and we have to move forward from this day, from this day on. We gotta move forward. We can't look back. We can't talk about what should have done, what should have given. We gotta move forward. And this is where we're at. We gotta put the other foot in front of us, walk on and do what's best for the citizens of Barstown.
Let me give you my opinion, you gave me your opinion. I've been involved with the Fire Department Committee since I've been on the council. I wasn't involved because we had any paid person on the fire department and I was chairman of the fire department 14 years and I made a recommendation to the council for a part-time paper chief. Then we gradually worked up so, so many full-time and eventually we was gonna work up to a full-time department, but you cannot do this all night. You gotta plan. Only problem I had, Mayor, you just been talking about this for 30 days and this is very serious. This is a big, serious business. You gonna be doubling the fire department budget, a million dollars? You don't plan that in no two or three weeks. That's the only problem. If we had planned it out and just like Tracy, looked at many options, I have no problem. I think we put the cart full of hearts. That's my opinion.
Well, this fell in my lap as of January, but the corporation has had it in their lap for over a year. So just let me wrong on saying that we've done it just in a few months, it's not.
It always the right way and the wrong way for a thing, Mayor. I don't care where you go, in my opinion, I'm gonna tell you like this, I ain't gonna go behind the back. It's the right way and the wrong way. Who puts that in anything? And if I was involved and I think I have a lot of knowledge about the fire department, I could have given you a lot of info. I wasn't involved at all. I didn't even know what was going on. And I have more knowledge about the fire department than you. I know all aspects. I know about the plumbing and everything. That's the only problem I had. I think we just put the cart full of hearts. That's my opinion.
Well, this fell in my lap as of January, but the corporation has had it in their lap for over a year. So just let me wrong on saying that we've done it just in a few months, it's not.
It always the right way and the wrong way for a thing, Mayor. I don't care where you go, in my opinion, I'm gonna tell you like this, I ain't gonna go behind the back. It's the right way and the wrong way. Who puts that in anything? And if I was involved and I think I have a lot of knowledge about the fire department, I could have given you a lot of info. I wasn't involved at all. I didn't even know what was going on. And I have more knowledge about the fire department than you. I know all aspects. I know about the plumbing and everything. That's the only problem I had. I think we just put the cart full of hearts. That's my opinion.
I'm new, I've been in these meetings on the fire department as an outsider, as going in as an emergency responder with these guys for 20 years, thinking that would help with the community face there at the meetings, kind of tag along. And like I said before and I'll say it again, everything we've done to reconcile these, but it's been going on a long time. And the way I understand this has been an ongoing problem. And we're at the point now that there's no going back. And I think raising occupational tax, that quarter percent, nobody likes raising taxes, but that's a small price to pay. So when you're loved one or you're in a car or you're in a house or you have another Guthrie Drive incident, when you want that truck there in five minutes and you're waiting 20 minutes, I've been there and that 15 minutes is eternity. And I think the taxpayers of the city, I understand where you come from, Francis, it's come upon us like a big rock, but it's here. We're gonna have to deal with it, ain't no turning back, ain't no turning back on it. And I think everything's been done and that we have to raise that quarter tax and it's only gonna affect, what, 2,000 people in the city and the rest of them are gonna be county residents or out of state or out of county residents. So it's gonna be a small price to pay for the protection that the city of Barstown serves. And I think it's long overdue. All our surrounding counties, Larry gave a good presentation of what cities our size had the same services already have a 24/48 fire department, we're behind. And the people in Nelson County deserve, the Barstown deserve. They've carried the county long enough.
Some of the information Larry Green gave us comparison, you were trying to compare Larry Green's recent taxing population and I reviewed that information, but you did not indicate in this survey those cities' occupation tax was higher than the Barstown for the, it was two occupation taxes now. Larry Green, I think, is he here? Yeah, are you? Did you do a survey, when you did that survey, when you had some of those cities highlighted? Of course, I imagine you. How many of those cities had a county occupation tax and a city occupation tax? The one that you had highlighted?
Well, I looked up the six cities that were closest to us in size that weren't in the metropolitan area and looked at their ISO rating and what they spend on the fire department and where they got money for their general fund, whether it was with their property taxes were, their occupational tax and their insurance premium taxes. And they all had higher occupational taxes and insurance premium taxes. And those are just the cities. I didn't look at the counties to see in which counties people can credit their city taxes against their county taxes. So most counties also had an occupational tax, but depending on the size of the county at certain times in the 1980s, some cities were allowed to credit their city tax against their county tax. So if you had a 1% county tax and you paid a 1% city tax as well, then the county didn't get any of that tax. In others, you have to pay both. So, and that is something I could look up to see the impact. But frankly, that would be the impact on people in the county. What we're really looking at here is the impact on people, or what I was looking at was the impact on the people in the city of Barstown and on Barstown's budget, not on the county.
And also after reviewing the data that you gave me, you said Barstown had one station. The one that you had highlighted had two or three stations, right?
Every single one of them.
And that's why you were trying to do some comparison. If you take the county occupation tax and city, well, if the county didn't have occupation tax and city just had one occupation, if you do the math, really, city would be too much outlying, right?
Well, we're out of line. Oh, we're out of line.
No, I mean, you don't understand what I'm saying. If the county did not have a tax, occupation, city would have a only tax and equipment higher. But if you add the city and the county together, if you do the math, to me, I don't think that much, and also, one station, one station, you could, I mean, if we have two or three stations, probably, you gotta have more income coming in to support them.
The thing about the station that is interesting, that all the other cities either have two...
I'm wrong.
Well, seven, two, someone one has three.
ISO down to two or three.
And that helps bring their ISO down. But one of the things they do in those communities, if they have two stations, like the way the fire department has proposed this budget, that the chief has in the budget for a full-time fire department, that would have four full-time paid firefighters ready to get on a truck and respond to a fire immediately. And I talked to some of the chiefs in the other towns, and what they did, they'll have two stations, and they'll have two people in one station and two people in another. And personnel is 80 to 90% of all fire department's budgets. So it's not that much different. We just happen to have ours in one, and there is, it's an ISO benefit to sometimes having two, because you're closer to a firehouse. But when both trucks have to go in order to get the four people on the scene to go have two in and two out, you're really not gaining that much. And so, no, there isn't that much difference between us having one firehouse and someone else having two, because the staffing, which is the most important, is the same immediate cost.
And also, by adding seven full-time firefighters, it do not determine, it help determine your rating, but it do not determine 100% of your rating.
That's correct.
Right?
It's not 100% of the problem.
Okay, okay. So you got three aspects. You got the fire department's aspect, and there's many aspects in the fire department that had to be checked out, pump or truck, or whatever. Then you have water supply, then you have emergency communication. There was three errors that they rate, right?
That's true, but I'm not sure we would ever get to a four, and you correct me, Chief, if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure we'd ever get to a four without the proper personnel for a full-time department. There are some things you can't overcome with, you can have the best radios in the world, if it takes you 15 minutes to get out the door because you're relying on volunteers, you're never gonna get a four rating, no matter how good your radios are.
But I mean, that's all been high school stuff, right?
That's right.
Personnel and infrastructure. You would have to have a fire at a street corner, citywide. I mean, this portion of fire outage is good now, but you would have to do things like that. So personnel is one of the big things for your budget.
Sure.
Well, San Francisco, you through Francis?
Yes.
Since we're not making comments, I'll make my comment. I haven't given up on the volunteers yet.
I have been.
Now, this doesn't have to be done today. If we order the equipment, we ask what equipment do we need to get the fire station, as soon as they leave, we gave the number and gave the equipment. Other than that, other than the equipment, what's changed? We still got the volunteers out there. Now, I hear, and I'm sure everybody else hears, that this one's not gonna come back to our fire. This one's not gonna come back to our fire. They go into the county. Why can't we try it? Why can't we, why can't we, why can't we try it?
Bobby, I think this is more of an issue of correcting a problem that's been coming for many years, that we've been tracking and providing, because it's 12 to 15 minutes are a respectable amount of time to respond. I'm not taking anything away from the volunteers. They give absolutely 100%. They have to get up in the middle of the night, you have to put their clothes on, get to the driving station, get their gear, get on the truck, run. What we're saying is there's still gonna be a huge part of this department. We're looking for that, those people that are in that firehouse, so that when the call comes in, they are immediately ready to respond. So I think it's a separate issue. From the separation now, one of the things with that, that I would liken that to you, I've used an analogy to say, if we're saying that it's working now, that would be much like if, I know you are into electricity and you, the grid, and you say, our electric is working now, so we could save money by firing all of our alignment, and we'll just wait until if the electricity goes out, then we'll go try to hire some line to come in and fix it. It's not a good option to play with the public safety to say, we already know we have this deficiency of response times now, to move forward and say, let's just wait and see what happens, and then try to go out and get firefighters when someone else is on fire downtown, third streets.
But one of the big fears I have with what we're talking about, with the numbers, it's not gonna stop at 17. And we're already talking about that it's, what, another million, million two, what have you? Now, it's gonna grow. It's not gonna, you're not gonna, it's a town drug. The fire department's gonna grow. Same thing happened in the police department. I remember when there were two police.
That's correct.
It's gonna change now. So the fire department is, I mean, I'm not saying we don't need to look at it. Do we need seven? Do we need two? Do we, the number could be whatever you wanna start with. If, how could we have, just for instance, how could we have, what's your worst times you have, Mark? What's the worst times you have far?
The timeframe of having fires? They're spaced very evenly. You'll have maybe a little bit more load between eight and four, just because the activity level that takes place in there, but by way of far, the percentage of the runs is spaced fairly evenly throughout the day.
Your area of concern, I'm sorry, Bobby. Your area of concern is after midnight.
That's, that's when our longest run times are, right? Our longest response times from time of call to the time we can respond to you. But after four o'clock, it increases to, yeah, eight minutes, nine minutes, and then between midnight and 8:00 AM, it's up to, you know, 12, 14 minutes.
Joe, you had that run at Hope's Hotel, when was that?
That was Saturday.
What time was it Saturday?
Sometime at four minutes, four noon.
Four noon? And how long did it, how long did it take you to actually get out and get there?
From the time the page went out to the first truck responded, I don't see it, was 12 minutes.
12 minutes.
And it would've took less than two minutes if we were gonna stay.
Hope's Hotel would not exist. It would be burnt to shell.
And I want to, also, Bobby, I just wanna make sure that you understand that the budget that we're showing, yes, a million dollar increase in the budget, but that's for this initial year, that includes a $600,000 purchase of equipment. So that's not every year. Am I saying that right, Tracy? That, I'm just talking in rough numbers. The cost of the personnel is not an additional million dollars a year. Tracy can give that.
How many firemen got there?
17.
How many full-time firemen?
We have 10 positions counting.
10 positions, and we all worked at the, from eight to whatever.
Now, we have, we have one firefighter on shift 24 hours a day, so we have three that work that shift. Three firefighters work 24-48, which means after four o'clock at night, there's one person in the firehouse from four in the afternoon to morning, Saturday and Sunday.
Well, one person, the volunteer, the part-time or full-time? This person?
Full-time, eight, hour.
And it takes, when you respond to a fire, first upon, is it four personnel or six personnel?
Four personnel. We would much rather have five. This presentation that I gave to the mayor for the budget is minimal staffing that we feel like we can, that we can do with four personnel on a truck.
So you got 10 full-time, do some stand stations or standby, stand-by or something? Do all 10 go for 10 apart?
Derek, the additional staff members that are not those three are, work from eight to four Monday through Friday. They do administrative work in addition to being firefighters. They do life safety inspections, public education, supervisor maintenance, so we have, everyone has a full-time job on top of being a firefighter.
Sure, sounds good. But to finish my statement, as I said at the beginning, I haven't really made up my mind one way or the other, but I do think that we ought to look at alternative ways. I'm not saying slide it all the way down. The can's been kicked down the road for many years, but to just though this kind of increase is pretty substantial for the people out there. You understand fire, and you're out there in the fire, but the people, all they see is a fancy truck running down the road. That's all they know. And I know they want you to be there, and if I have a record, I want you to be there. But to go from zero to 100, just, I don't know. I think that we could use the fire, use the, and I've stayed with this, this is something they all have heard, I think that we could utilize the fire, the volunteers.
We absolutely are.
Well, if we're going to staff it, why would we, why would we keep the volunteers? Why wouldn't?
You only have an initial response by that first truck out. That first truck is not gonna be all of the firefighters on the scene to conduct operations at a fire or rescue. It's the initial operations to get out the door, to get that immediate care started at an accident scene, or to set up initial operations at a fire scene. So you're, we're definitely gonna depend on the volunteers. And that's not gonna change. It's still gonna be very much a combination department.
Definitely.
We have, we have crawled in that we had volunteers, and we have walked in that we've added one around the clock, and I think it's, you know, we're wanting to walk now, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna run until we get our feet on the ground.
Yes, go ahead. Okay, I'm hard at it. We had this conversation yesterday, and I told you then it wasn't, it wasn't your fault. I told you it wasn't happening. Coach Roll's still not happy today. I'm an optimist, though, and I guess what I'm asking is, is it the corporation that is wanting to separate their ties with us? Is it mutual, or, you know, give me some direction. Is it a combination of a number of things?
I think absolutely that would be correct. It's a combination of many things that have transpired over the past six months at least that have led us to this, that have led us to this position. You know I stood here two to three months ago saying that we want to do a consolidation study. And from that point in time, we have not been able to generate the motivation that it has taken to get us to do a consolidation study. The contract is not renegotiated at this point in time, so we have to prepare ourselves to protect the city.
Okay, and then to Bobby's point, I think it was, or Francis, I can't remember, we're talking about 10 dedicated full-time firefighters that we have right now, correct?
10 on staff now, yes.
Correct. And when you go to a fire, I know you roll the truck before, you use the two in and two out, so that's what you have to have, have that forward.
Correct.
Okay, and what you also have to consider as you employ people is if somebody's sick, if somebody's on vacation, you have to figure and things like that.
Yes, in that budget, included in that budget is part-time staffing to fill vacation and sick time.
And you're gonna do that with overtime, or how are you gonna do that?
No, part-time, part-time employees that would fill in that vacation personal time.
Let me feed you some information. This did not start yesterday. This did not start a month ago. This started even back when Bill was here, when he hired that fireman from Zolton, Kentucky, out of the blue, that the council didn't know nothing about. They were having problems then, okay? This isn't a new matter, and this is nothing new to anybody. And when we were on, and I think you were there too, with Bill, he gave them a notice and said, in one year, this contract is up, you have to renegotiate. It's gonna have to change. And that hasn't changed at all. So when I won the election in November the 4th, I was setting, they would have a, the corporation had a public meeting, I attended it, it was public notice, anybody could've attended it, and I did that. And I laid out my, what my beliefs and what I would like to have seen. And that was a merged fire department as one, under one command, one set of rules and guidelines, and turned in, not to say it's not professional, but it turns into a department that answers to one guy and not two or three different people. So in the meantime before that, I had talked with one chairman, thank you, God always salutes me, but one chairman, in the meantime, then somewhere down along the road, they had a coup, threw that chairman out and had another chairman, and you don't, and then I asked, who am I negotiating with? Nobody could respond to me. Nobody did. And it began to be, it's just a stalemate. Now we waited, now we're, here we are, down to May, I think the 15th, somewhere, dates may be off here or there. And I ran several proposals across to different ones of whoever was in charge. I met with different members of the fire department, of the volunteer. But now we're down to the 15th, and they never got back with us consolidation. I think they had maybe a vote or something the other night, a couple nights ago or something? I don't know. But now we're at a point, it's just too late to do this. We can't continue to work in this fashion and do that. There's just no way. And I've never, never heard nothing back on this consolidation study, nothing. And it is not, it is not a negotiation between me and Dean Watts and the magistrates, or all of us and the corporation. It was, it is a, a conversation between me, as it was with Bill, with the corporation, and that's it. And I had, and there was no proposal. I was trying to throw anything at it that would, that would, they would accept. And I finally made a proposal. They wanted one, I made them one. And it was a Christmas gift, and we could've stayed there. It was refused.
So can you share those details?
Larry, it was, it was like the dues are at 50, I wanted to go to, what, 60 or 70?
It's a total one increase to go to $61, that if the corporation would raise their dues to $61 the first year, a dollar a year, until after 10 years, their dues would have gone from $50 to $70 a year. And that they would then turn that, those funds over to the city and contracted the city to provide fire protection for the corporation area. And that...
And that, so that, that was essentially it. And then that the corporation would become a, a way to fund the, the operations, their side of the operation. And they would collect the money, turn it over to the city and contract with the city for the fire protection.
So, so, excuse me, hold on. So with that being said, I turned around and then started, had a contact, and I guess at that point, I thought Stacy. And, and through multiple texts and back and forth, it was never, it was never, no contact made. So long story short, we're, we're at an impasse at this point, and it is over. There's no question about it, it is over. And I, I.
Yes. I would just like to ask that the, the council, I know that you are figured in dollars and cents, and you know, our profession is, is saving lives and property, and that's what we do. Uh, you know, you know, I trust that Mr. Simpson there was, if I had a question about electricity, I would go to Mr. Simpson. Since that's his profession, they feel they'll give me the most professional opinion, and I would probably take that to the council because that's what you do every day. This is what we do every day. We see what was, what's transpired, we see what's the run times, we see what's going on with volunteers, and we see that side of the fence. And we're trying to be, we're here today pleading that you approve that budget so we can get these seven personnel, so we can save lives and property like we all want to do every day. And to trust in our professionals, to trust them what we see every day. And, and you know, Joe, you know, our twenty-four hour guys that are there, the one person there that are waiting for these volunteers to come in, they're sitting there fifteen, ten, twelve, fifteen minutes waiting for other people to come in, and they're just, it's very stressful for them because they're wanting to be there to help and save, they're having to wait, and that's a, that's a lot for them to endure. So I'm just asking that the council, please, you know, take what we're telling you as things that we see every day, that what we're here to plead to you, to ask for those personnel, so we can provide this service to the citizens, for our sound data server, that what's going on in other communities that they have already. And that, so that we don't have to, we're trying to be proactive here, that we don't have to wait for another life to be lost, or a big part of our historical district to burn down before we say, oh, we should have done that. We're here to be proactive, we should do that, and I'm asking that you entrust in us that what we're here to, to present to you, that.
Uh, with, with that being said, that's, that's Roman, that's where we're at at this point. And, uh, I never, ever got another proposal. I had many volunteers come see me, but my negotiation is not with the volunteers, it is with the corporation. And never got another proposal. So in my opinion, they were wanting to stand, and, and that's where we're at with that. What I presented here is options on the budget. Now you, you as, that's, as mayor, that's what I consider myself. I've given you the budget, there's your options. If you want to change any of that, then that's what the finance committee can do, that's what you as a council can do. The mayor gives the options, and that's what I present, is options. Yes, sir.
That's my wrong finance, this is another point that Dave has brought up, you know, our budget for the city's been one point one million for the fire department in previous years and so forth, and the corporation's given a hundred twenty-five thousand.
A hundred twenty, and of that, really of that, we use what, I think eighty thousand of it?
Either or, I mean, this is so out of kilter that it's not even, but as councilman, I feel like I've got a responsibility to the city taxpayers. And the, the occupational tax, as Dean says, is, is supposed to be used for his fire protection. But I don't think the county's stepped up and, and tried to solve this problem. Dean says he's not responsible for fire protection, but yet is the city, the city taxpayers responsible for the county fire protection? And we've been paying that bill for, I don't know how long, but they've been riding on our coattails right? And it's time to either balance the scales or, or furnish a service to the city that we need service. And that money, obviously, is too far out.
I have a comment there, do you have a comment?
Sure, you got a floor.
Once, it's more important, saving someone alive, saving property in Boystown, saving taxpayer money, all that almighty dollar.
Saving a person's life.
Okay, so we talking about running the corporation down, this is the money. So if you, if it's more important to save somebody's life, what's, what's so big deal about this, this money? City of Boystown do not have on record from any residents, any property owner or taxpayer, a complaint related to funding aspect of the corporation. Not one complaint. That's all I have to say.
Okay, let me, let me say this. As an emergency service responder, please and finally do this, your ultimate goal in emergency services is life-saving. Property is second. The price that, the price that you want to, you, do you want to put on, on a life is that quarter percent of occupational tax? Do you want to say you're putting a value on the life that, that you don't want to raise that one quarter of a percent? So you're valuing that life at that dollar amount? Because that is the difference between a minute, minute twenty seconds or something out the door versus fifteen or twenty? And you want to, you want to put the value of not raising the occupational one quarter of a percent to do that? Which you would probably get that money back in the different of the OSI ratings, you would probably, ISO ratings. You would probably receive that money back in, in that. So I guess what you're saying is, is the value of life is less than it is that quarter percent of the occupational tax? That's the way I understood it.
Because in particular, I said, I support the fire department, I dedicate firefighters to corporation and the city because the corporation, for many years, for decades, they worked together. Dedicated firefighters risked their lives in the city of Boystown, saving residents' lives and saving property and property tax. I support them a hundred percent, and I support seven full-time personnel. But we have enough funds, I told that fact, we do not have to raise taxes. I have no problem supporting, that is our responsibility, is, is good property tax and to save lives and save property owners' tax money. I have no problem with full-time personnel. I have a problem increasing taxes, which we do not have to.
So you say you was, so you say you would support the?
I, I support them.
Whether, whether by our own system?
But I don't support an increase in taxes because the city is not broke.
Well, on the, on the, the division of the, of the Boystown Fire Department and the Nelson County Corporation has come to an impasse and has been that way since nineteen ninety-five. And I think you have the fireman back here that will stand up and tell you, hasn't been working.
You talking about?
It's been, it's been functioning, but it hasn't worked.
The administrative aspect is complex, is that what you're talking about, administrative aspect, or you're talking about the?
All of it, all of it.
You're talking about dedicated firefighters too?
No, I'm talking about fighting fires, getting that truck out the, out the door, the administrative part, it hasn't, it hasn't worked. So I'm gonna let Ms. Tracy tell us
I just have.
Where, where are those funds that Mr. Lillian says we have?
We, we do have unrestricted funds, but if you keep using them, you're gonna deflate them, and we have to have some way in order to put that money back into the fund.
So how, how many times can we use that before it's depleted? Will we go two years?
Two years is a lot.
Make them cut to another area.
You're talking about the general fund portion of it?
Right.
I mean, you know, mentioned it many times, you could, you could sell the electric, sell the water, sell the sewer to MSD, and your rates would triple like they're doing in local. MSD's gonna raise it, what, ten percent down there, starting in next month? You could sell all those utilities, give the garbage to, to the, the county. You could cut that budget a whole lot.
I've got a recommendation, you want to hit me?
I've given you the options, there you go.
Your paycheck every year from that half pay.
You make more money out of it, Fred.
No, you didn't say anything about that.
As mayor, I make, I, I make less than five dollars an hour.
First night in the bank, and you can afford to donate that fund back in a week of health, new shopping, ten more, twenty more, probably.
Ms. Cuthbert? You have an account?
Sure. Thank you for meeting with me yesterday, I appreciate that. I appreciate, you guys are experts in your field, and you have presented very well. As I discussed with you yesterday, I, I support you, but I, I was disturbed and disappointed by what happened. I'll, I'll be honest with you, and I told you that at the table when we met. Fred made a very good point, we must look at all options to fund this. Looking at the occupational tax, I, I agree in removing the cap. But I, I'm looking at the half to the quarter, you know, and, and why it's that, or maybe why you didn't go to one percent, or whatever it may be. Because then I don't want to come back to this again where we're needing more money. In, in reference to hiring seven personnel, something has to fund you. We have to find a way to make this work. Looks like it's irreversible according to the mayor, that you guys are not gonna work together, and we're not gonna negotiate any further. So now we are, the council are at a point where we're gonna have to make a judgment here. We're gonna have to take care of what needs to be taken care of, and furthermore, citizens are important, lives are important. But I want to be correct when it's talking about funding you guys. The necessity of seven personnel. Documentation in reference to callouts after twelve, and callouts after four, and the times and things of that nature. So I, I definitely want to get more information on how this could be funded and be thoughtful about it, and think about our citizens in reference to this. This is something that has happened right now, we haven't had time to think about this. I'm new to the council, so I definitely wasn't on here a year or two years ago. So I, I, I want to look at all options, and I want to be sound in, in the judgment on this.
Again, you know, I presented it to you, I present options for the council, it is for you all to decide on those options. And we will call a finance committee meeting and explore those options.
I, I have one more thing, sorry, mayor. Tracy, because I met with you today, and you showed me where this was already in on the proposed budget. But I think that I would have liked to have seen it without those numbers. I, I think I would have liked to have seen it without the occupational information out there, what it was, the raw number, without that being in there. Or maybe just like the top page, you know, showing, okay, this is what it would be without it, and then the number showing what it would be with it.
I could definitely get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Tracy, that would just be, it'd be a four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollar change, correct? Is that what's built into it?
Uh, it's four hundred thousand, but we took the max on the utility dividend, whereas before we were taking two percent, now we're taking three percent, so.
Yeah, I, I see that, but as far as the occupational tax, which he's had?
Yeah, that's just the four hundred.
Four hundred thousand, so you give minus four hundred thousand for that number?
I'd ask a question. Tracy, for the over hundred thousand, how can you derive a number for that?
I, I told the mayor, I said I, I would say a ten percent increase because I, we don't have a way to look at the earnings that have come into the city, who makes over a hundred thousand dollars? We have no way of tracking that.
That's an unknown.
So that was just a, that's, you know, that was a estimate, that's a hundred eighty thousand dollars based on thirty-six million in additional wages or profits.
So that four hundred thousand is derived from the, the figure in right now?
Just the quarter percent, because the cap isn't gonna affect us until after six months into the calendar year.
So I guess what I'm hearing from you as a council, do you want to table this and wait? And then do we explore the finance committee's options?
As I said, that, to me, that's, that's a, that's a detail, as Keesha said, we have to fund it, if we're gonna do this, we have to fund it. I, I'd be comfortable, I'd be okay with leaving it shown as an occupational tax increase. And if we decide later, I mean, do you, we usually set the tax rates in September, September?
The property taxes.
Property taxes in September, so we, we have at least till then if we, so we, to me, that's not gonna affect how I'm gonna vote on the budget.
And, and understand that a, a vote for this budget is not a vote to raise occupational tax, absolutely not.
That's a separate.
It's a separate vote, there's no legal, if you think, please don't mistake that there's a legal.
When will, when will we address that?
Well, that, like I said, well, yeah, we could, well, we could have a finance committee meeting whenever, next week. And we, and we may decide that before we actually pass it, but I don't, I don't think we need to tie ourselves to that because we can, we can make that decision later.
And I apologize if you, if you all thought that that's what we're like, gonna have to pass this, this occupation, that's not it. What I'm asking is just, just what we have in the proposed budget at this time. And Fred, thank you for correcting me, but we'll, we'll address that other issue in the finance committee meeting. I will send you emails and address, and ask you to, or address that to you in emails, and/or stop by the office and I'll have a conversation with each and every one of you. I'm there, I practically live there now. So it's just on the proposed budget, does, does not have nothing to do with the occupational tax or any other taxes.
We, we have a special meeting next Tuesday. We, we could, we could put this on the June second meeting for a vote, for a first reading, rather than voting on it tonight, it's all a chance to think about it. What date we say, what's June the second, we, we, next Tuesday we have a, we have a meeting, a special meeting.
And that's just a few hours before the regular meeting?
Yeah, I can change it to four o'clock.
I said it wouldn't give us much time.
No, we, we normally have a working session, we've already called a special meeting, have we not?
We've called a special meeting at four thirty to discuss something else.
So we could add this to that.
And change it to four o'clock if we need it.
Uh, okay.
Does that affect you, councilman?
I don't know.
It's a week, all week to think about it.
Come on.
Sorry.
Tell you about that, what you talking about?
The budget, as far as voting on the budget. The budget, as far as voting on the budget.
And Mayor, for the, for the record, I may be wrong on this. Not that, not that we would, but if we didn't approve the budget, we would just operate off of the current budget instead of the past one. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's, that's a formality, right?
I have a question, sorry. So the proposed budget has the occupational tax in it, is that correct? So we would, that would be in there, that's the budget that would, if we voted on that, we'd be, no?
No, all, all we're voting on is the income stream, but it does, we're not voting on occupational tax.
That has to be done totally separately.
We're just voting on an income stream that we can gain in other ways, just how will we decide to do that, and we have to.
Okay, so for the fire department, the hiring of seven people, is that?
That's in there.
In the budget?
But also is that equipment that they're gonna need immediately, come June the third. They gotta, they have to have that, they have to have the.
Right, I understand that they have to have that, that's not what I'm speaking in reference of. I'm speaking in reference of the personnel.
Right, but, but if you don't vote for any way to fund it, then that, that goes away. You got, there's, there's two sections, you have your budget that you're gonna vote on, which is the personnel, and then, if you don't want to fund that, it goes away. You gotta find a way to fund it.
Oh, no, so why, okay.
That four hundred thousand dollars could just mysteriously come from someplace else that we're talking about, didn't have to be contemplated.
Yeah, we, we, you know, there, there's four ways to raise money.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do one of those four. Or, or like I said, a gas pension, a gas franchise fee, or electric franchise fee, which we've talked about.
So, and this, and this budget just has four hundred thousand, we could actually use unrestricted funds for this budget, but we really need to think about between this time and the next budget, what can we do to fund the fire department further?
Well, that, that opens a whole discussion that, I think I mentioned to you, Tracy, that I'd like for the finance department to look at each of these, you know, there's, there's eighteen million dollars in our, in our checking account, in like eight or nine funds. What should these funds be? Should they, is there enough in these? Is there a lot, you know, is there more than we need? How are these funded? Just, just to your point, we have one point four million dollars in our general fund, which we can use once or twice, but how long can we do that? So that's another discussion that we have in the finance committee as well.
That's quite a question, I'm asking a question, Tracy. I told us it was eighteen million, how much of that is what it is, unsecured?
Unrestricted?
Yeah, restricted. How much is that restricted, how much of it unrestricted?
I would have to get the right, I'm not for sure, I haven't taken this job, I've been trying to set the funds and open the budget, so there's, I don't want to give a definite number.
Right, so I would like to know how much restricted, unrestricted? How much we got unrestricted, how much we got, is that simple?
It is simple with research, but I don't want to give you a definite answer tonight, and then be wrong.
Well, it's right on the sheet, right?
I don't.
More or less. Well, the, well, the, well, I, I don't know what you meant.
Okay, so you could get me that.
Okay, because some of our money is tied up in CDs.
Sure.
Mayor, if I could ask another question? Sure, absolutely. Do we have a law? I hope not. Does not include any kind of pay increase for employees?
There is a two percent cost of living only in this budget.
Is that across the board?
Yes.
So we're, so we're gonna make a motion to, you want to table this till? Yeah, we're waiting to.
I don't think, I don't think we have a motion for that.
Talk about it to the. Because everybody's getting new packets, and gives everybody a chance to digest some numbers.
And, and understand about the special session at four thirty, that's to discuss pending litigation. You have out-of-town council, council that will be here, so.
Clock's ticking on that.
Yeah, if you do it at four, just everybody should be prepared at four thirty to.
I'm sorry, I may have cut you off. Can, can we flop those, or would that be inconvenient for council?
Larry, I think it's already set up.
Yeah, it's already, we've already set it with them for four thirty now.
Okay, because I didn't, okay. Now, if they, if they arrive early, you're talking about, you want to take them first, see what we have, yeah?
I mean, you could, if you advertise them together, you can go to the executive session at any point, there's no restriction.
So we can take those first, is that what you're talking about? Take them first? The attorneys that are on the clock, am I correct?
He is on the clock.
So it's a consensus that we don't table this till, till another day for more information? June second, right?
Three times to vote.
Make a motion to the Senate? All right, I can go, huh? We don't have to. We don't have to.
Yes.
Our second emotion.
All the way? Those opposed? Out there, means the Senate.